As we learn in more detail, on October 1st, we get certified equalized values for the district. So we'll know that impact on the mill rate. And then on October 15th, we get certified aid from the state. And again, that'll help us formulate what the actual tax levy is. So we'll be coming back in October to amend the budget and set the levy. So I don't know if the people in the back can read this. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. Again, we don't have any more accurate information than what was presented to the board back in July with approval of the preliminary budget. The budget as presented tonight is balanced. It includes the spending of grant carryover and the establishment of a fab lab where we've designated $25,000 from the fund balance. And we're anticipating the ending fund balance to be approximately $5.8 million, which is an increase from the prior year. I'm estimating or projecting that we would have a 39 FTE, I'll call them, in declining enrollment, which is used in the three-year revenue limit calculation. These budget assumptions are based on that July 1 aid estimate from DPI. The budget also includes, and we'll talk about it later, per pupil categorical aid, which increases from $150 to $250 this year. And also, as I mentioned earlier, that October 1 equalized value from the Department of Revenue we're waiting for. The budget reflects a decrease of 7.5% in insurance premiums. We've already accounted for a 1.5% increase in salaries. And the budget reflects a decrease in health insurance premiums of 7.5%. And it includes a Wisconsin retirement system increase of 2/10ths of a percent. So one of the things I want all of us, and particularly the community, to take away from is to understand the revenue limit in its truly its most basic form. Essentially what it does is the state, when they enacted this back in the 90s, was looking at to reduce property taxes. And they do that by restricting what we can spend. So it's, I'm sorry, it's what we can bring in in revenues. It's not what we can, they don't restrict us in what we can spend. They restrict us on what we can receive for revenues. So essentially, once we calculate the revenue limit, it's made up of two pieces: state aids and local taxes. And that's all there is. So if state aids go up, local taxes will go down. And converse is true. The important thing with the revenue limit is our enrollment drives it. And when I talk about FTE, FTE is not the same as our actual student enrollment. So we get 0.5 FTE for early childhood. We get 0.6 FTE for 4K. Then we get 1 FTE for K through 12. The formula also allows us to include FTE from summer school. So we calculate the minutes of the total summer school and we get 40% of our FTEs is included. And this is a little graph based on our three-year rolling average over the course of time. And we're estimating this year that we have our FTE for revenue limit will be at 2,377. One of the things I wanted to point out is we're going to, I'm working with, again, Scott Grau's team at Forecast 5. And I mentioned to the board last spring that we paid at the University of Wisconsin Applied Population Lab to go ahead and do an analysis of our enrollment and our demographics in our community. What I'm hoping to do this fall is I'm hoping to add that demographic data into the model. And right now, if you look at the summary of that APL report, it predicts, depending that they present five different models to us. And depending on the model that's selected, they're showing an average decrease of 1.5 to 3.9% decrease in our enrollment over the course of the next five years. Okay. You've seen this one before, and I want to just go over it again. It's, and I don't know for those people in the back, again, it's, this is the actual spreadsheet that we use to calculate the revenue limit. And I'm going to go through some real basics. And the first thing I, and this is just an example worksheet. The first thing that I want to show you, oops, let's go back. Well, that's all. Is in this upper box. And what's really important in the upper box is our revenue limit for this year is based on last year's expenditures. And I'm going to talk about it in a minute, but we get a declining enrollment exemption and a hold harmless exemption. And last year, if you look at that number, it was over $900,000 in a one-time exemption that we get for declining enrollment. So the first thing the state does is they say, "We're going to take that off because it's a one-year exemption." Then they take that total and they bring it over to the other side as our base revenue. So then what they do, is this is slow enough. Then what they do is they take and they look at our average expenditures in the first box, and I jumped a couple of slides ahead. But they take the average expenditures in the first box, calculate that over, and they divide that by the previous year's enrollment. And we get a per pupil, average per pupil cost. So it's average per pupil cost. And then they bring that down. Then they look at this year's enrollment. And what we're projecting for this year's enrollment? They multiply it by last year's cost. And they give us a hold harmless. So they give us additional funds one time for the year to bring up, bring us up to last year's base. They also give us a declining enrollment exemption to help cushion the blow for declining enrollment. And you can see between those two numbers, we're talking over $700,000. And again, that's going to be a one-year revenue limit exemption. And you can see that as our enrollment is decreasing at a lower rate, the amount of the exemption is starting to drop. So if we have a lot of student loss in one year, we get a one-time bump. But if we have a gradual declining in loss, that one-time exemption gets smaller and smaller and smaller. I'm going to go through this here. The bottom corner over here is used where we took it, you probably heard computer aid. We have, there are, in the equalization formula, there used to be a portion where electronic devices that were used in business were exempt from taxation. The Department of Revenue calculates an aid, what that aid does is we don't get more aid if there's a property taxes. And I'm sorry, that slide was not seeing. Okay. So this is a history, and it looks very similar to the graphs you've seen before. But this one is our maximum revenue limit with those one-year exemptions over time. And you can see that we have kind of a steady decline. The big drop back in, I think, 2011 had to do with Governor Walker and Act 10 when he cut our funding back. This one is an example of where ANIGO stands on that average per pupil cost. And we compare ANIGO to the state average, and you can see that we're slightly below the state average. So in real simplistic terms, what the revenue limit does is if you can picture a piece, or you can picture a pie, and the revenue limit authority is the size of the pie. And inside the pie are two fillings. One is state aid and the other is property taxes. And the takeaway here is because of declining enrollment, our pie, the overall pie, is getting smaller. And this year, our revenue limit authority is shrinking by $549,000. So where does our revenues come from? You can see here, our local taxes represent almost 30% of our Fund 10 and Fund 27 revenues. And state sources there represent 63%. And then we've got some federal sources. And we'll take a little closer look at that. I don't know if you can see this well enough. This, this material is coming directly out of the budget adoption sheet that Dorez prepared inside the budget book. In the source, 210, or 210, that's local property taxes. 260, when you see it on there, that it's not a very good description. It's non-capital sales. Those are primarily student projects, and the bulk of that is going to be the class construction loss. 270, our admissions to extracurricular activities. 290 are primarily student fees. In the lower half of the chart, we're looking at revenues that we receive from other school districts. And in the 340 area, that's primarily open enrollment tuition. So when we have students from other districts coming into our district, that's what we receive and that's what we budget. State sources, in that first one, 610, that's a categorical aid that we get for transportation. And I already talked a little bit about, and we'll talk a little more about, that per pupil aid. The 620 there represents the general aid that we receive under the revenue limit. And the 650 there represents our Sage and AGR grant. I've alluded to the per pupil aid, and it used to be a part of the revenue limit. And it was a, an inflationary feature of the revenue limit, that the legislature would decide what the rate of inflation was and adjust the revenue limit authority accordingly. What happens is we as a district, our, we have a large portion of our budget is from state aid. There are other districts that are very property wealthy that get almost no state aid. So the legislature took it from within the revenue limit and put it outside the revenue limit. So all districts now get some form of per pupil aid. And this year, legislature increased that aid from $150 to $250. And as aside, there represents some, we're receiving an increase of $236,000 this year as a result of that increase. And then we get into federal sources. So these are federal sources that are helping fund our fund tenor, general fund. They're not special education, they're outside of that. The 710 is Carl Perkins. 730 is our Title II program that we use primarily for professional development. It also includes CEIS, which is kind of like the preliminary part before students are identified with special ed. 750 is Title I. And then that $130,000 that you see at 780 is Medicaid payments that we receive. And typically, those are payments that we receive for prior year services that were given to special education students. The state also supports our special education in Fund 27. And I apologize for switching back and forth between funds. Fund 27, the state's program is another categorical aid, and it's called Special Education for School Age Parents. It's based on last year's expenditures in special education. And we're receiving a reimbursement rate, they're anticipating about 26.1%. So there's quite a gap between what our costs are and what we get funded with. Okay, let's take a little look at expenditures. As you can see from the graph, salaries and benefits make up the largest part of our pie. And included in those benefits would be everything from Social Security, WRS payments, insurance premiums, that kind of thing. Salaries include everything from custodials, food service, athletics, coaches, teachers, administrators. Purchased services are just like it sounds. It's things we purchase, and that can be either utilities or primarily utilities and transportation and those kinds of things. Non-capital objects are primarily supplies. Capital objects are primarily remodeling. So I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail. This is listed in the budget book. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. The budget does include $215,000 for expenditures for capital maintenance and remodeling. We maintain the technology budget. It's usually around $165,000 to $170,000. This year, we've increased it by $25,000 to finish off the district-wide phone system. The budget includes a capital budget for fixtures in addition to the technology. So we're looking at classroom fixtures and other capital things like computers that principals want to purchase. We've included $65,000 for the general fund that can be used primarily for elementary. I've included $15,000 in Tom's budget, raised his $15,000. I've also included $12,000 additional in, at the middle school. The budget includes $40,000 for professional development. It includes $25,000 for curriculum replacement. And we started something new this year where Amy heads up our technology committee. We've given Amy's committee $15,000 to try to consolidate software programs for educational purposes. And then we've also budgeted, started a budget, just a little budget. We've added $5,000 into, to support the funding of hiring police officers for selected co-curricular events to increase security. And then the budget also reflects the closure of the two elementary schools. So now we're going to take a look at the expense side of the budget, and we're going to look at function. And when, when we talk about function, it's like, what is it used for? So when we talk about functions, it's salaries, benefits, capital objects, supplies associated with particular function. So in this one, I'm just going to highlight two of them. Undifferentiated curriculum, that's a term that DPI uses primarily to identify the elementary program. You know, it's, we're talking about curriculum that is undifferentiated, and one teacher is teaching multiple subjects. Regular curriculum happens to be like math, science, social studies, that kind of thing. Support services is another big area, and it basically encompasses everything other than instructional. And I'll just highlight a couple of them. The $210,000 function area is pupil services. And that's, it's not a very good description. It includes counseling, nursing services, psychologists, instructional coaches, and a little bit of PBIS that we do. The other one that may be a little bit confusing would be the $220,000 area. That encompasses the library and the technology program. Then the last one I want to highlight is business administration. Business administration really encompasses all of building maintenance. That includes custodial and remodeling. It encompasses transportation. It encompasses our, my department's area. So it's a huge operational cost that includes utilities to keep the district operating. I'm not going to go into much detail. Jake, later in September, will make a presentation on the summer maintenance activities. I just want to say that last year's budget supported almost $400,000 in capital improvement projects. And finally, we have, listed in the budget is a non-program area. And there are just two items that I want to talk about. In the $410,000 area, that's the transfer from the amount that the district supports the special education program. So it's the transfer from Fund 10, general fund, to the special ed. The other area I want to talk about is the $430,000 area. That's showing our expenses for open enrollment out, that we're paying other districts as students in our district leave to attend other districts. So we have total expenditures in the budget of $26,245,316. So now we're going to change gears a little bit, and I want to talk about post-employment benefits. Looking back at about 2013, 2014, the board changed what we were giving employees that were retiring. We used to have a defined benefit, now we have a defined contribution. Teachers that were retiring and support staff that were retiring from the district were eligible for some type of post-employment benefit. By state statute, we have to present this type of information at the hearing. So in 2014 was the last year employees were eligible for the post-employment benefit. And I want to talk a little bit in detail. So we have got two different funds that we're running in Fund 73. The first one is the one I've identified as PMA. That's our defined benefit. And if you look at that one, you can see just in the numbers, the amount of numbers in the column, there's a lot of activity going on in that account. And that is kind of a pay-as-you-go plan where we have teachers that are eligible for post-employment retirement benefits. They're receiving benefits through PMA. It's invested in the trust that's managed by the PMA advisor, financial advisor. And you can see there the activity. One thing that's important, beginning in 2014, 2015, no one's eligible for that. So that activity in that account is going to decrease by approximately $100,000 each year. And by '21, '22, that activity should be below $100,000. The other account that I've got listed is Mid-America, is really our HRA program. So to replace the post-employment benefit, we now, as we have funds available, we bring it to the board for approval, we are currently giving our staff a contribution to our retirement and account. And so it's a fixed contribution. There's no long-term obligation other than that we're funding it as we have funds available. So combined between the two accounts, we have a beginning balance of $1,277,549. We had contributions to the trust of $1,016,512. Total distributions of $820,127, for an ending balance of $1,491,980. There's a lot going on in there, and Dawn spends a great deal of time working on these calculations. The trust is audited, but by statute, we're required to report it at the budget hearing. Now I want to shift gears to talk about the Community Service Fund, Fund 80. The important thing to know about Fund 80 is it can only be used for programming outside of the regular programs that the district offers for students. We use Fund 80 primarily, I mean, we use it to support the Aquatics Center. Other districts use Fund 80 for park and rep programs. Some of them might use it for funding a community center, that kind of thing. But we use it for the, for the Aquatics Center. Last year, we raised the levy on Fund 80 by $50,000 to $270,000. That seems to be, this year's budget, it seems to be about the right amount of money. We were fortunate this past year to receive over $170,000 in donations from the Aquatics One of the things that we've added this year to the Aquatics Center budget is I've added a little more detail, and it may be difficult. But on the revenue side, we, we used to just list donations and fundraising activity. This year, we've broken that down into operational gifts and capital projects gifts. Excuse me. To make the Aquatics Center budget work, we need approximately $27,500 in fundraising activity that that, that Aquatics Center needs in terms of revenues. And that's with the $270,000 levy that we impose. I've added two lines to describe how we're using those funds. So I, in the, we've included a line for capital equipment, and we've also included a line for maintenance projects. Last year, we were given $60,000 from the Remington Foundation to paint the interior of the pool. We're also designating some of that carryover funds to replace some aging equipment in the filter room. And we'll go ahead in the following year and spend down that carryover money as maintenance projects arise. This is something that you saw back at, in July. This document hasn't changed. It's essentially an estimate of the tax levy. Levy, all in, is at $8,515,779, which includes $302,883 for prior service levy. I've talked to the board about that. There's great detail in the budget report that goes over it. And again, this estimate is based on that July 1 aid estimate from DPI. And we still do not know the equalized value of the district, and we'll find that out on October 1st. I want to switch gears now, if anyone has any questions on that. I guess one final thing on this. The decrease in the levy of 66 cents represents a $66 savings per $100,000 home for an owner. And again, this is just an estimate that we did back in July. Here's an example of our historic tax rate. And you can see that it's dropped a little bit, but we've been pretty steady right in that $9 range, $9 to $8. Let's take a little look, closer look at the fund balance. Fund balance can be used for cash flow purposes, and I'll spend a little time in a minute talking about that. We can also use it for planned and unplanned projects. And I began the presentation tonight talking about how I was late with preliminary budget. What I asked the operations committee to do this past month was to consider whether they wanted to designate a portion of fund balance to be used for the purposes of either district operations or planned projects. I want that committee to review that information both in September and October. We're going to be amending the budget in October as we set the levy. That budget amendment, if the board so chooses, could include designating a certain portion of the fund balance for planned maintenance. The fund balance can also be used to insulate against revenue loss. I talked about earlier, when I talked about the revenue limit, I talked about how as we, our rate of decline decreases, that hold harmless and declining enrollment exemption starts to shrink. We could use a portion of the fund balance to offset that slower rate of decline. And then finally, we can use fund balances for future purchases or future initiatives. And an example of that was last year, we used, we designated $100,000 for the after-school program. This year, we're designating $25,000 for the fab lab. And that would be an appropriate use. So we're anticipating ending the, year next year, with a fund balance of $5,884,920. This is an example of the worksheet that I presented to the operations committee, and it goes into a little bit of detail. And just some highlights in it. This year, we switched insurances. So we ended the year with, when we switched insurance companies, they wanted to be paid prior to the start of July. They were asking for some prepayment. So that first number there of $173,000 represents prepayment of insurance premiums. I was hoping Patrick was here because Patrick asked a question about the HRA. The next line item represents the district's contribution in very simple terms, the district's contribution to the HRA fund, which supplements our insurance. It has not been offset by some of the expenditures that we'll have from that account, but that's what, that's what that represents in very, very simple terms. We've got some grant carryover there. And then we've also designated, it's, I shouldn't say designated, we have some unassigned for cash flow and unassigned for emergencies. I talked about, a little bit about our expenditures, and in the past, we have always done some short-term borrowing. By having, by adding a little bit to the fund balance this year, the amount that we're going to need to borrow is probably going to be less. going to need to borrow is probably going to be less. Dawn Schrader just finished doing our cash flow, and we have very consistent expenditures. We typically give one of our employees a 26 equal payments, so we know that 73% of our budget's salary and benefits, that's going out fairly even. On the bottom half of the slide, and I don't know if you can see it, you can see the little boxes are when we either receive tax receipts or aid payments from the state. The first one in August there, that 35% is tax payments that we receive for the prior year's budget. So if you look at the whole, you can see that in October and November, and in April and May, we have gaps where we have no revenues, and we're using our fund balance to float us across those times. And as an example, this is a historic example of our cash flows, and you can see right where we get into November, and we get into April, we're dropping like a rock, and that's how we are using fund balances. So the budget totally is $26 million. In the general fund, $245,316. All funds, which include those listed, would be $30,283,404. And just to end that, I should have backed up on the cash flow. I'm going to need some direction for the board because I mentioned that we built almost $400,000 into the fund balance. We typically borrow a million and a half if the board chooses to spend fund balance. We just need to account for that in our short-term borrowing, which will happen at the same time. Okay? Any questions? Thanks. Yeah. We have a motion for adjourned. You're adjourned. Okay, we'll take a couple minutes, and then before we get into the regular building. So folks, if you want to take a break for a second, and get the restroom, we'll start up in a few minutes.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice.
Thank you, everyone. Bobby, roll call, please.
Tara Gissel?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jansma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Here. All right. Once again, we'll let the record reflect that Dr. McKenna did indicate that he cannot be available this evening, so he's excused. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the July 26, 2016 meeting as presented for amended financial report for July 2016, and payment of bills for Jack 6448 through 6531, and numbers 1617000 through 8 through 161700090, totaling $768.21.
Motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Mary. Any discussion? Erin and Bobby, roll call, both, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jansma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tara Gissel?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item three, some delegations. Anybody signed it? I want to sign it, okay. We'll move on to item four, fiscal year 2017 budget approval. Looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the fiscal year 2017 revised budget and authorize administration to proceed with preparation of bid documents for purposes of short-term borrowing.
Okay, motion from Ms. Yalzow, second from Ms. Mead. Any discussion? Since we just heard Tim's presentation.
Nice presentation.
Any questions for Tim? Erin, then, roll call, both, please.
Scott Jansma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tara Gissel?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to new business, item one, Committee on Instruction Report. Jeanne?
Okay, the meeting of the Committee on Instruction was held August 2nd, 2016, in the high school media tech room. Committee Chair Jeanne Long called the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Committee members present was Jeanne Long, Danielle Yuska, Dr. Scott Jansma, Tim Fuller was absent. Other board members present was Mike Boldy. Administrative present was Brian Missfeld, Heather McCann, and Heather gave a presentation on Weekend Backpack Program. End of 2016 school year, we were serving up to 136 students between West Elementary and North. This year, we will add the remaining schools for the program as district ride. The cost of the program is $128 per student. Volunteers take care of the numbered labeling system, doing the backpacks, and delivering to and from the middle seats. Karen Baker shared and updated regarding special education programs. Brian reviewed the current enrollment numbers as well as the anticipated changes due to the two closure. Discussion following detailing the consolidation of students by moving eighth grade to the high school, and grades four and five to the middle school, which would be referred to as an intermediate school. The committee took a close look at numbers of students per classroom and per class. Karen explained that policy 342.11 is no longer acceptable to the, applicable to the district. This information is now in the form of a notice which is filed on the district website. The next committee meeting will take place on September 6, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Anigo High School IMC Room. The meeting was adjourned by 8:15.
Anyone have any questions on the instruction? Thank you, Jeanne, for your report. Item two on new business, Anac Committee on Facilities. Andy?
Okay, meeting of the Anac Facilities Committee was held August 4, 2016, at the Anigo High School IMC Room. The meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by myself. Committee members present, Jeanne Long and Patrick McCann. Other board members present, Mike Boldy. Actually, Patrick is other board member present. Administrators present, Brian Missfeld, Tim Prunty, Tom Zamzow, Cindy Fisher, Jake Lyer. There was a review of the priorities. Brian Missfeld shared that the common goal previously established by the board are as follows: equitable services at all buildings, balanced class sizes, multi-track schools. The committee discussed district enrollment over the past 10 years and the enrollment projections going forward. Jake Lyerman shared four plans of each of the district buildings. Possible solutions for consolidation may include the following: moving grade eight to the high school, moving four and five to the middle school, and changing the name to intermediate school. West with 12 classrooms, housing four grades could become a three-track school for grades K through three. North with 12 classrooms, housing four grades could become a two-track school for grades K through three, with the remaining classrooms being used for two K4, 4K classrooms and two rooms for early childhood. East with 10 classrooms, housing four grades could become a two-track school, and a rural building location to be determined would allow for one additional track. The changes would come with renovations and remodeling to each of the buildings in order to make these accommodations. Long-range plan with timeline, 10 of the plans will be discussed in the September Committee on Instruction and Committee of Operations. As we're discussing the whole plan here, you know, it's really apparent that it really is about instruction here in operations, and that both committees have to be involved in the whole plan. Committee members will continue to work on a timeline and long-range facilities plan, and bring those ideas to the next meeting with the goal of presenting a plan at the October Board of Education meeting. The next committee meeting date is to be determined. The meeting was adjourned.
The questions?
How, how well is the public represented? Are there, do people come to these meetings?
Well, yeah, maybe two. You know, for my two cents worth, I would say, you know, not only do we want to have a meeting with the Instructional and Operations Committees, but somewhere along the line, we want to have an open forum or a public where we can present some information to the public and get some feedback.
One of the agenda items for the next Anac Facilities meeting after the committee's had a chance to discuss it will be public communication. Certainly not any good attendance at the meeting, but if we announce a special meeting or a special forum, I think it's a better turnout.
Any other questions? Thanks, Andy. I'll go right ahead and look for the Operations Committee.
A meeting in the Operations Committee was held August 16, 2016, at the High School IMC. The meeting was called to order by myself at 7:00 PM. Board members present, myself, Patrick McCann, Tara, Yuska, and Mike Boldy. Jessica Mead was excused due to a family matter. Administrators present, Tim Prunty, Jake Lyerman, and Tina. There was no public comment. Tim did a, explained where the budget stands for 2016, '17 fiscal year. He said 70 to 75% of the budget goes to salaries and benefits, followed by student supplies allocations of $120 per student for supplies for the year at each school. He also explained where the district has maintained money and allowed for new contributions to various accounts for future planning. As an example, we maintain $215,000 in the maintenance remodeling budget and $185,000 in technology, adding an additional $25,000 to the technology for completion of the phone system conversion. We have also maintained $40,000 in an account in Brian's budget for professional development as he sees fit. Tim also explained the need for budgeting money to five subject areas which would allow us to make upgrades to these departments on a rotating basis. Also, the conversion of classroom equipment is an ongoing project. Tim discussed the arrangement of local law enforcement regarding additional law enforcement at school against, i.e., prom, and that the district agreed that paying overtime to these officers is worth it to ensure our community's safety. Tim explained to the committee members, other changes or adjustments for the upcoming budget year, there will be corrections to the allocation of the AGR grant money formerly Sage received, so that those dollars are going towards student achievement rather than teacher salary. He also said we will be allocating additional funds for PBIS effort and athletics and proposed salary matrix being planned for the 2017 year. The Novocan School Forest fundraising efforts, Tim explained, Tim and Jake updated the committee on the School Forest account, which is sitting at approximately $125,000 after receiving a $25,000 award from the Remington Foundation recently. We have also applied for a similar grant with the Sheldon Foundation, and we are hoping for a similar contribution. The fundraising committee will begin their own efforts very soon, and they are requesting that the district initiate the bid package for the foundation and for the building to be enclosed. The Operations Committee agreed that this would be an appropriate process. Personnel, Tina, the HR coordinator, provided the committee with an update on staffing. We currently have 10 new hires and six positions to be meeting to be filled. QZAP's financing in conjunction with Act 32. Brian reviewed the details regarding qualified and solo academy bond award of $2,500,000 from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. The use of QZAP funds requires that the district find a 10% contribution matching funds from a private entity. In our case, the former district administrator entered into an agreement with the Cyber Learning Academy to provide this match. The cost for the Cyber Learning Academy is $625,000, Mr. Missfeld shared. His concerns as to whether the $625,000 is a sound investment with the Cyber Learning Academy, and more importantly, if the programs and services offered are parallel to the practices we currently have in place. He then reminded the committee that we have five years to take advantage of the QZAP funds allocations, but we are bound to the Cyber Learning Academy. And if we were to pursue QZAP funds without the Cyber Learning Academy, a $20,000 penalty would be imposed. Furthermore, QZAP funds in conjunction with the Act 32, the energy exemption, also have strict guidelines for compliance through DPI. First, the district is required to enter into a performance contract. The contractor will work with the district on a long-range facilities plan and mutually agree to projects that are eligible for QZAP allocation. This is followed by a resolution of understanding. The contractor determines the cost without a bid process. Tim Prunty said that it is allowable for districts to level borrowed funds through Act 32, completely separate from QZAP. Committee will include discussion on different ways in which to borrow money in order to upgrade our buildings. Designation of funds from 2016 fund balance for maintenance projects. Tim Prunty provided a detailed balance to what is in the fund balance. He then asked the board about using fund balance for maintenance projects. He said he will be introducing this at a budget hearing, which he did, and be asking for a decision at the October Board meeting. Permission for hunting and recreational use at the Novocan School Forest. The attorney representing the insurance company which provides liability insurance has brought to our attention that we should have signed agreements with anybody using our land. We need to post the lands and enforce the rules for using the lands. Any person using land such as a hunter should go through the permission-permit process and check the activities calendar. When there is any, there are any children on the property, there is no hunting allowed. The policy regarding hunting and recreational use will be revised and brought to the board for approval. Amendments to the employee handbook for 2016-'17. Tina, the HR coordinator, updated the committee on the revisions of the employee handbook for the 2016-'17. Revisions are minimal, and we'll go to the board meeting on the 23rd. Snowplow bids, there were bids received for snowplowing services from Stevie Excreting and Krieger Steinfest. The committee will recommend to hire Krieger Steinfest at the district's snowplower removal. The next meeting will be Tuesday, September 20, 7:00 PM, in the High School IMC. The meeting was adjourned at 9:00 PM.
Any questions on the Operations Committee?
Brian, can you tell me more about the five subject areas?
What we were talking about is replacement of curriculum materials, primarily textbooks. It was in reference to a discussion we had, I had conversations with Cindy Fisher, and it's been, she's been in the position of Director of Curriculum for 12 years, and our social studies textbooks are older than that.
So what we'd like to try and get the habit of doing is a rotation update, text, science, social studies, math, reading, and writing.
Anyone else with any questions? Andy, thank you for the report. We'll move on.
Other reports, the school garden project. Ms. Deep, you're up.
Did you say makeup?
No, heaven forbid. This is an alert statement. You don't have to say wrong. Everyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I have, I'm just gonna sit up quick. Thank you. Okay. So, once again, my name is Akita, in case you don't know me, but I'm here to just give you an update on the school garden, on the progress of the school garden. I don't know if you've driven past it at all, but it is flourishing, and I am so, like, it's very exciting to see it. But I just wanted to quickly give you kind of a summarized timetable of what happened so far. In last October, I was, I met with Dr. Childs, and he approved the application of a grant to the Wisconsin Medical Society Foundation. The next week, or like two weeks later, I came to you guys, and I requested your, you know, your input on the initiation of a school garden, and you were all in on it, which I'm very thankful for. I just gave you some general information about the project, including the project goals, which I included from last year, from last October. And I just, I'm very happy to say that the project goals that we, that I put down for the grant application, we totally shattered them in a good way, and I'm very, I'm very thankful to say that instead of constructing five raised garden beds, we constructed 10. And to assess the participants' feelings on the establishment of a school garden, well, I think that was, that was established when so many people, so many students from across, you know, across clubs and across groups and across all grades were willing to step up and volunteer and help build this. Now, after that, in December, I came back to you just to let you know that I got 2,000 out of the 5,000 that I requested. There's a typo up here. I did not request 10,000. I really did not, I promise. I requested 5,000, and we received $2,000 in grants. This last March, we held a meeting with members from the school faculty, including Mr. Churchill and Mr. Cohen, to discuss maybe the garden, you know, setup and the garden location. And then later on, Mr. Churchill's students planted their own seedlings in their room, and then Mr. Cohen's agro-science students, a couple sections of them, planted some seeds in the greenhouse as well. All that seeds, seed money, yes, it's a pun, but I guess, the seed money that we got bought the seeds. And the FFA greenhouse sale, I don't know if you are familiar with that. Every year, they have a greenhouse sale, and Mr. Cohen was gracious enough to like put aside some of that money to buy some extra material as well. So then in May, in the middle of May, a lot of students got together just over a week or two, and 10 garden beds were built. And the pictures are in there. I know it was just like, some students included, you know, the FFA students, the agro-science students, horticulture students, the red robin machining and other shop classes, and then Mr. Churchill's tech ed class. Also, we all got together, we made, we made these beds, and then Mackenzie Powell came up with the idea to have that circular layout that we have out there, which I thought was really cute, like that just gives a kind of a recreational look to it. And the soil mixture and seedlings were transplanted about a week later. And then at the end of May, an FFA student, Sam Chesler, and Mr. Cohen both applied for the Syngenta Grow More Community Grant. It's a grant that is given by the state-level administration of the FFA, and they give it to four schools every year that are working to initiate or, you know, develop their school garden. And so we were lucky enough to be one of those four. And then just a side note is that the WMS Foundation doesn't give their grants lightly either, so I think it was just very cool that two or three students from Anago High School were able to write grants that are very rarely given and were able to receive the money. August 2016, I'm very happy to say that 200 pounds of produce, student, student-grown produce, has been donated to the Anago Food Country. And so I think that also shatters another goal, is that we wanted to, you know, kind of implement that idea of service and implement that idea of, you know, working together and giving back to the community that we've all grown up in, and I'm, I think that this was a good way to do it. And I really couldn't have done it without, we couldn't have done it without the support of the community or you guys on the board, so I thank you very much for that. And if you have any questions? Excellent job.
That's wonderful. That's wild.
Thank you.
Thank you. On that positive note, let's talk about accidentary monitoring reports.
Right. So these are end-of-the-year monitoring reports, so really we're just reporting out on our progress, our results. I've asked the principals to keep it to those results as much as possible, and I guess to that end, I'm gonna start with a few reports, and hopefully they'll follow my lead. It will be succinct as possible. So I'm gonna start with Nancy Rush's reports for Mattoon and West. As you know, Nancy resigned. She offered to come back, but I told her I think I could cover it for her. Her reports are in there. Nancy has, as you'll see, very detailed reports, so please take some time to look at them. But the overview is, for Mattoon, Nancy's goal was that by the end of the 2015-2016 school year, 75% of the first through fifth grade students at Mattoon will be at or above grade level based on their May Fanta-Suppanell score. So again, Fanta-Suppanell is just one measure we use to assess reading levels. Additionally, all individual grade level percentages will increase from the baseline percentile. End of the results, they had 73% of students ended the year above grade level, indicating they didn't quite meet their goal of 75%, but they came awfully close. Really good progress throughout the year. They did have two grades where there were slight decreases in the percentage, percentage of students at grade level from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. That wasn't because any students slid back. It was actually because some students who started the year above or at grade level left the school, and some below came in. So it's just, as you guys know, we have a very transient student population. As students move, your percentages are going to shift. High note, every single student in the school did make growth throughout the year. Several students made more than a school, more than one year's growth throughout the year. So a lot of our students have multiple years that they need to gain, and we had students who are closing that gap, so that's, as a result, they didn't quite meet their goal, but I would have said at the start of the year that it was a very rigorous goal. At West, very similar goal, except their goal was 60%, just based on their starting point, 60% of first through fifth grade students at West Elementary would be at grade level by the end of the year. 56% of their students made it, so again, they didn't quite meet their goal, but a definite increase. They also had a couple of grade levels that fell short. Again, there weren't any students that felt, that went backwards. It was because of some students moving in. Individually, once again, all students made growth, and they had a number of students who also made more than one year's growth in the year. So we're getting there. I think in both cases, Nancy set very rigorous goals for her staff. In both cases, they fell a little short, but I would much rather see our administrators say rigorous goals and falling a little short than setting goals that are going to pass midway through the school year. So based on, based on the progress, I'd say she, she set some attainable goals, and they felt a little short, but definitely learned some lessons from them. I'll jump right into the middle school, as long as I'm reporting out. The middle school, our goal was to have, our goal was worded a little differently. Our goal was just looking at the students who started the year below grade level, and we wanted half of those students to be at grade level by the end of the year. Some of those students were multiple years behind. We ended up with 40% of those students reading at grade level by the end of the year. So we had 87 students that started the year before, below. By the end of the year, 35 students had made their, had made grade level. Again, we didn't meet our goal. On a bright note, over 80% of our students did meet their personal growth goal, which means they made over a year's worth of progress throughout the year, but they were just starting multiple years behind and didn't quite get to grade level. So again, we made progress. We didn't get where we wanted to, but we're continuing to learn some lessons. One of the things we're gonna do at the middle school to better serve these students next year is we're going to start implementing Fanta-Suppanell at the middle school. Right now, we use AIMS Web. We're gonna continue to use that as our screener, but Fanta-Suppanell, which they use at the elementary schools, just does a better job of drilling down to really what areas of reading the students are struggling in. Is it comprehension? Is it word recognition? Is it fluency? So our goal is if we can really identify where the struggles are, that by the end of the year, or as we provide interventions, we can target those skills, which is what's happening at the elementary school, and we're seeing some pretty positive results there. With that, we'll step into our school reports, and we'll start, I guess, alphabetically with the elementaries. So Kelly, who'll lead us off?
I would stand away if you're not like that. So ours was kind of a multi-tiered goal, and we started off with below-grade level students. So our goal was 80% of students who are below grade level will make at least 1.5 years' worth of growth. We partially met that goal at 77%, but 100% of our students made at least one year worth of growth who are below grade level, and 23% made a year, a year's worth of growth, 65% made a year and a half. So we just missed it a little. Our next one was 50% of students who are below grade level will meet grade level expectations. So we exceeded that goal at 62%. 80% of students who are meeting expectations will exceed expectations was our goal, and we exceeded that with 90%. And then our last portion of our goal was 80% of students who are already exceeding expectations at the beginning of the year will grow at least one and a half years' worth of growth, and we exceeded that with 90%. And one little bright spot, I know that we had talked about mid-year, our first grade had gone down drastically with their data, and we did a lot of in-class intervention, and we implemented a lot of new strategies within that room. And if you look, I know there are several charts, but one of the charts shows the first grade's fall, mid-year, and spring data, and you can see that her data drastically increased. So just wanted to shine a little bright spot on that. You guys have any questions?
Good. Thank you.
E, is that right?
E, you're right. For letter recognition.
There you go. That was part of my action plan. At East, as you follow along with our, our school learning, our SLO, during the 2015-16 school year, 50% of the students in grades one, K1, will increase their fluency, and fluency is how fast they're identifying letters. And 2 through 5 is their major, which is their comprehension. To get to 35 percentile in the school year, well, their students would remain in the 50, 50 percentile or higher. And you say the 35th, usually it's the bottom quarter, but AIMS Web uses the 35th percentile as you're called at. So our goal was to get 48 kids to move into the 50% or higher, and we did not make that goal. We were, I think, we're at 30, we're still at 33. So we had 15 kids move, which is tremendous, I think, because some of them, we wanted to move from red to green, and that's two steps versus one step. But if you look at the red to yellow, the red went down quite a bit, and the yellow, of course, improved because the red went up, but they also moved up through the green. So the biggest point that I want to take away is we had 75%, or 74% of our kids at the 50, 50th percentile or more. So we're making progress, as Brian said. We want to set our goals high so that we can, instead of achieving them, keep a way forward. So that was great progress. It's been about a year and a half since we've done this. So we're moving. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
North, at the very beginning of the year, when we did our first SMAR assessment, we had 48% of our student population were reading below grade level. So our goal was set to have 20% in the deficit area. So it was, it was a big goal, and we got very close. So at the end of the year, we ended with 28% of our students are still below grade level. So we only missed our goal by 8%. So I feel that that was very good. We were very intentional and explicit with our strategies. And through our SMART time, we also had five students that went through the entire RTI process, and they were identified as specific learning disabled. So we came up short just by 8%, but we'll get it next year. Do you have questions?
Okay, for pleasant use, good evening. Our goal was based on using our universal screeners and reducing the percentage of students below grade level by half by the end of the year, so that was different for K2 and 3 through 5. K through 2 was, 14% were identified at the beginning of the year. We wanted to drop that to 7. 3 through 5 was 22%, and we wanted to drop that to 11. And there's two different screeners, and that's why the separation. K through 2 is PAL, and 3 through 5 is AIMS Web, which you've referenced earlier. So we were very close to meeting our goal. We did show significant gains in the K through 2 level. We had only 2% below grade level in K through 2 at the end of the year. So that is very significant. At the 3 through 5 level, we did also make great gains. We had 14% of the students below grade level in spring, so we were only 3% off. If you look at the overall school, we did reduce it by half, but if you look specifically within those grade level groups, we did not. Something that's really positive is we had three grades that had no students below grade level by the end of the year, which was kindergarten, first, and fifth grade. Something I will say about third grade is it's a bit of a transition year, not only in the assessment arena, but also just in content as well. In second grade, you're still kind of learning some of those reading functions and basics, whereas third grade, you're starting to apply those skills. So third grade's really a make or break year, and that was definitely our toughest area was the third grade. And my teacher put in some very specific things to assist this group of students. We implemented a program called Read Naturally, and it was successful. I know at North they did as well, and we're actually using that district-wide with some of that software money that Tim referenced earlier to purchase as an intervention. And we did experience growth for all students, so there were no students that just maintained. So I was pretty pleased with the results. Of course, there's always improvement in them. So any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
The report that I put together includes data on the three goals that the high school has set for the, that are aligned to our district's strategic plan, mission, and vision. And the first one has to do, deal with ACT performance. The second one is on percentage of students passing AP dual-credit transcript and credit courses. And the third one has to do with full secondary plan for high school students. So that's what I'm gonna talk about. The first one, we've been measuring, you know that we are in the second year of all high school students now taking the ACT, where in the past it was students that mainly were considering a four-year college program. So we did see a dip. I should tell you that our school data, statewide data, isn't embargoed yet, so I have to be kind of general on how I present this, but we saw a decline in performance in all in all four core areas, English, math, reading, and science, and the composite score. So what, what's important to know here is that this is not growth data. You're looking at different sets of students, one year to the next. So what I decided to do for you is to break down the data into two different categories. Students that took three years of English, math, natural science, and social studies, and students that took less than that. It's obvious, and when you read through the ACT report, it is about rigor. Students that take a more rigorous program are obviously going to perform better on the ACT. So our data clearly shows, students that are not taking the more rigorous track are not performing as well as the students that are. And you see that in both the 2015 group and the 2016 group. I did note some differences in demographics as far as, I explained the DUES rating, I guess, that each Wisconsin high school student receives, and that this past year, we had a higher number of students with that DUES rating, which predicts or calculates likelihood of students graduating from high school. So we're doing many things. I was just talking to Mrs. Matic this morning. Our intervention data is very positive, where we are, we call it our Huddle program, and we're meeting and talking about kids, and the data she showed me was very good as far as less attendance issues, discipline, passing their grade, their coursework. And then we also just received this week our ninth grade performance data on the ACT periodic. That's a predictor on the ACT, and that data, data looked very positive for our ninth grade students. So that's good, that's good to see. The second goal has to do, has to do with the percentage of students passing advanced placement dual credit. You can see there that the data is there, is also good, close to our baseline data from ninety, from 2015. Eighty-one percent of our students that took that type of course passed it. And then the third goal, our graduation plan, post-secondary plan, I put together a little three-year plan that we're going to be rolling out and working on. And in several years, two years, all seniors will be presenting a portfolio as part of their graduation report.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, did anybody present a portfolio this year?
We had our AIMS students present portfolios. They did a very nice job. So, but it's not, we would, I would come with a proposal to update graduation policy. This would be something students would need, be part of their credit requirements.
So will students be presenting portfolios this year?
Not this year.
Not this year? Okay.
Thanks for taking the pressure off me. I'm Jeff Funtel from Spring Valley. This is my first SLO that I wrote, and I learned a lot. I'm going to break it into two because we two, we use two different screeners, just like most of our elementary students. K two, we used our PALS. So my SLO for last year at Spring Valley, at the end of 2015-16 school year, all K through two, through second grade students at or above fall benchmark will maintain that level, and fifty percent of the identified students will meet grades K through two target on the spring PALS. Okay? For a guy who wrote his first one, I guess I didn't realize that the kids who fell below benchmark needed to stay in Spring Valley to reach that. So as you look at the data going, going down, we've got our fall down to our spring. Kindergarten, we still had one little guy that's going to repeat kindergarten. He is a young gentleman who is primarily learning social skills and how to communicate with others. And if we look at grade two, if you guys remember, our core second grade with health reasons of our second grade teacher, it was a long year for, for them. However, they did progress. It's not, it's not shown on this screener right here. Again, going back to Fanta's panel, most kids did reach, if not more than a year, at least one year's growth. Okay? And now, as we go down to our three through five, my target was at the end of the 2015-16 school year, third through fifth grade students at or above benchmark will maintain that level. Fifty percent of the identified below or well below will meet grades three through five. Again, they needed to be there in the fall and the spring, and unfortunately, they weren't. Okay? I'm not saying that we failed in it, but we did fall short. As for my first SLO, I learned a lot. I need to look at not specific kids. I need to look at what is happening in the classrooms. Okay? So my sixteen, seventeen SLO is going to be right on target. I swear. Okay? But just throwing some numbers out there, remember, Spring Valley, Blue Ribbon School, back in nineteen, help me out, Tola, or two thousand? Blue Ribbon, two thousand one? Okay, how many years ago? Right now, out of those, if you look at our, our students in the spring of 2016, I averaged it out, as you can see, some in the three through five, since there were two screeners, kind of, so I averaged it out, nineteen. Out of those nineteen students, five of those nineteen students were enrolled at Spring Valley last year. So fourteen of those students were not at Spring Valley. Out of fourteen students, new students at Spring Valley, ten of them came from out of the district. And I'm not pointing my finger at anybody or any other schools or things like that. Kids who stayed in our district, four kids who, who transferred into our district, some of those kids, second, third, maybe even returning to Spring Valley. Okay? It's difficult. Going back to a Blue Ribbon School, my teachers had a hard time dealing with students below grade average. And me being a new, new principal, I finally encouraged them to take risks, step outside their comfort zone, because they needed to reach those lower readers. Okay? So you know what? I think our faculty out, out there, our staff has got a new view. They understand that we do need to reach to the bottom, still meet the medals, but yet the high flyers, we need to let them go. So we are trying things that are outside the box at Spring Valley, because if there were a right or a wrong way how to teach, we wouldn't have these problems in public education right now. We need to zero in on what the kids know, what they need to know, and zero in on how they're going to learn. Okay? So we got, we've got a long ways to go out there, but yet they're excited and, is it? Sorry. Thank you.
So just to kind of summarize it, as you can see, we, we didn't meet our, our goals. Came very close in a lot of cases. We had students who showed a lot of growth. We've got work to do. I think the positive that comes out of all this is, you know, we've been doing this for a year and a half. It's a new process for us, and we're learning as we go. We're making mistakes. We're not hitting all of our goals, but the nice thing about having numerous schools working on this at the same time is we're sharing, sharing strategies and starting to implement those. What's working at this school? What's working at this school? How can we bring them together? A great example is the SMART time that really started at Mattoon and West. Nancy Resch got it started, and from there, the other schools picked up on it. Amy referenced the Read Naturally program, which Glenda initiated at North, and now we found it, it's working well. We're going to spread it to the other schools. So we're finding little pockets, and we're trying different things at various schools, reporting out to one another, finding out what's working, and starting to share them. So I think the future's looking bright, but it takes time to, to make change. So we're headed in the right direction, but we've got work to do. One of the things I will commit to is that next year, our monetary reports will look the same. So it, it is difficult jumping from one school to the other. We're committed to making a similar format, to give them short to the point, and making sure that they're easy to read, cutting out some of the educational jargon that we like to throw out there. We throw it out without even knowing we're throwing it out, so everyone can understand what we're talking about.
Brian, can I just go back to Mattoon? Nancy's report at the end here, I think this is the end, she has final monetary report, notable nuggets. And for, as an example, the fourth grade, yes, six percent of fourth graders are at the first grade level. At what point do, do kids repeat a grade?
Well, I'll tell you, Andy, educational research would show us that repeating a grade has almost no effect on improving student performance. So it's really about, a lot of times, repeating a grade is social, for social reasons, those sorts of things. There's a book out there, Invisible Learning. It's called, written by John Hattie, and he conducted a meta-analysis of thousands and thousands of educational studies, ultimately involving millions of students, and repeating a grade has almost a zero effect size on student performance. The better strategy is moving them forward and providing intervention. So these kids, where she notes that six percent has identified behind there, they've been identified by that school, they're going to continue to receive interventions to move them forward. So the, the better strategy is to give them, we call it core plus more, give them the instruction they should be getting at their grade level with the remediation. There are times we hold students back, but it's typically when, you know, you know, I think as Jeff maybe referenced, social skills, emotional skills just aren't nowhere near where they need to be. It's always an ongoing discussion with parents, with the staff, ultimately trying to figure out what's in the best interest of the kid. But again, the research tells us that more often than not, it's not going to help.
So this would be where some of the Sage funding would get used for?
Absolutely. Yep. One-on-one tutoring. You know, in some cases, we're probably moving a kid towards special education services.
They're not there already?
They may be, they may not. I don't know the specific student she's referencing in this case. So, you know, and it's purposely left vague for that reason, to not put any identifiers on the student.
Right. I'd just, I'd just be surprised that, I mean, if someone is, you know, in fourth grade and is at a first grade level, the fact that there hasn't been intervention yet.
There's been intervention.
Okay.
Special education, there's a lot of things that could disqualify you from special education, if it's, if it's an ELL student.
What does that mean?
English, English language learner.
I see.
English as a second language. That can be a disqualifier for special education, because it's not a learning disability.
Right.
It's a language barrier that's causing them the gap. So then we focus on those skills. So special education is, it's, it was already a complicated world, and in the past few years, with the new specific learning disability laws, the reason we're doing all of this RTI process is because it's a legal requirement, has made it much more complicated, and we follow a lot of steps before a student gets that label. The goal is to, if we can, if we can provide them with interventions before giving them a label of special, you know, special education is going to stick with them for life, why not? If it's something we can provide in the classroom without those extra services, why not do it? When we hit that end where we can't anymore, that's where the referral comes through. This student may very well, you know, six percent is probably one or two students, may very well already have special education services.
That's a very good explanation. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Principals, thank you. Appreciate your reports, and thank you for the Reader's Digest versions. We'll move on to item three, legal update. Mattoon petition and QZAB info.
So Kevin, I asked Kevin to come in regarding the, the petition to form a new school district. Really what he's going to do is provide us with a timeline. The, the big thing we need to keep in mind is a timeline, and I've been in communication with the petition, petitioners and shared with them that we are looking at a public hearing for September thirteenth. Kevin is going to keep us, is, I think, got a general timeline that we need to follow. We're going to share that out. He's also going to give us some update on, we discussed at the operations committee, the QZAB agreement, specifically as it relates to Act 32, and he's going to share out some information on that and some of the legal requirements as it relates to QZAB and Act 32.
So I'll start, thank you, Brian. So I'll start, and I'll certainly be available to answer any questions you might have on either of those issues. For, for the sake of background, a petition has been filed, an appropriate petition has been filed. Twenty percent of the electors' signatures were included on that petition, which starts the ball rolling in the statutory process for the creation of a new district. The, the first step that we have to take as a board is to call a public hearing. I believe that we are intending on holding that public hearing on September thirteenth. The public hearing is, is exactly that. It's a hearing. It is a open to all public, members of the public to come in and provide concerns, thoughts, information that they have regarding the issue of creation of a new school district. It is an opportunity for you as a school board to gather all of the information that you need to make the first decision in the steps as identified by the statute. And so we'll hold that hearing on the thirteenth. Brian and I are working together to get those notices out to the public. We want to encourage members of the public to come, to share any thoughts that they have, because this is the only hearing required in the statutory process. So it's important to get the message out early and often. We want everyone to feel involved, and we certainly want everyone to know that, that this is the opportunity to share thoughts that they may have regarding the creation of districts. After September thirteenth, the, the process is bifurcated, if you will. It becomes a if this, then here, if not this, then here. And it all has to do with the easy-to-remember SDBAB, the acronym for the School District Board of Appeal and Review. In any event, it's a body created by the Department of Public Instruction tasked with handling these types of issues. And if, if you as a board are unable to make certain decisions at points in the process, those decisions are then kicked to this DPI-created board, the board that is appointed by school board members from across the state. And the first decision point is October, let me get this right, October fifteenth. October fifteenth. If by October fifteenth, you as a school board can agree on the precise boundaries and the apportionment of assets and liabilities as it relates to the new school district, then a new decision point comes in January fifteenth. So if on October fifteenth, or on or before October fifteenth, you as a school board are able to make a decision regarding the boundaries and the dispersment of assets and liabilities, you then have the obligation to, by January fifteenth, adopt or deny a resolution regarding the creation of a new school district. If you're not able to make a decision by October fifteenth, that decision is then kicked to this board, this DPI-created board. They will come back, they will apportion the, they will apportion the assets and liabilities, they will set the boundaries, and then you will be forced to, by April fifteenth, make a decision as to whether or not to create or deny this petition for your school district. It's important to, to understand those two options, but it's also important to understand that if you as a board do not make that decision and you kick it to the DPI board, that DPI has the right and will charge back the fees that they incur for making that decision. So understanding that short-term timeline, it's my recommendation that in the early part of October, you as a board be prepared to sit down and make that initial determination regarding the boundaries of the desired new school district and decisions regarding the assets and liabilities for the new school district. Again, understanding that my recommendation would be to work toward making the decision before October fifteenth. Tim and Brian and I have been working to begin the process of understanding what assets and liabilities are associated with this potential area. We, we are working with the petitioners to clearly identify what the boundaries of the created school district would be, and we're hoping to have input on all of those topics at the hearing and then formulate it for your review on either, on either October fourth or eleventh, so that the decision can be made, the resolution can be passed regarding those two matters. I'm going to stop there because there are I'm going to stop there because there are other timelines once decisions are made. But in the in the short term, those are the decision points that you need to be aware of. Any questions about that process?
Kevin, can you just clarify, because I think this was a point of confusion for me early on. In October, we're not necessarily ordering the creation of or denying the creation of the new district. We are agreeing to what we're talking about, boundaries, assets and liabilities. I shared with you the initial boundaries that were on the petition and talking with some of the petitioners. They they may come and present some slightly different boundaries at the hearing, which they're entitled to do. You could look at other boundaries as well, which you're entitled to do. So, you know, they're continuing to collect information, which is good, from the people that are living in the area that would be impacted and may have some some changes that we'll want to look at. But the October date isn't ordering the creation or denying the creation, it is coming to an agreement about what we're talking about for boundaries and what we're talking about for assets and liabilities.
Absolutely right. That's absolutely right.
Would you be present at the public hearing?
I I can be present at the public hearing, absolutely.
Because I guess, I think, what a lot of people had questions on, me too, you know, what are the what are the pros and cons of the boundaries, the assets, liabilities, and just the creation in general?
Yeah, and I certainly can be available. But again, understand, I think the anticipated format of the hearing is information gathering. I I don't, that doesn't mean that board members are precluded from asking questions of the public, certainly you will. But I I want it to be understood that this isn't a question and answer of the board of what you will be doing. But certainly, I can be available to assist in that discussion. Yeah.
June?
Nope.
So the September 13th meeting, is there a procedure? Is there someone that presides over this meeting? Or is this, this isn't, this is going to be a free-for-all?
Well, public hearings are are a structured free-for-all. It's a it's a hearing. It's an opportunity for the, there's no time limit that we're certain that we're going to set as a right hour. That hasn't yet been decided. I I encourage the board to be willing to sit down and listen to members of the public provide input, provide documents, provide written, whatever statements they want to provide. Now, that that will require that the board president create rules regarding how that information is presented in the board. We certainly want one individual or one representative for a group of individuals to be presenting one at a time. We want this to be conducted in a professional and courteous manner. To the extent that's not able to be done, you know, we would make decisions at that time, but I think that that's a pretty attainable goal. So it it's a hearing. When the information is fully fleshed out and there are no other members willing, members of the public wanting to offer information, then I think we close it. Now, I I said there's going to be no cutoff time. I would suggest that we hold the hearing open for a minimum amount of time, understanding that members of the public may not all be able to come in at that time. None of those structural kind of logistic elements are outlined by statute. So in in understanding that public hearings are not a forum that we typically, you know, have here for our discussions, I'll work with administration to set up that hearing. I think two hours makes sense to afford the public an opportunity at minimum to come in and present information to you.
In in working with, in the discussions I've had with the petitioners, I've been confident in saying that they're just as concerned as we are with having this be very conducted professionally. And so I think we're in good shape there. They have similar concerns to the board that they don't want this just to be a free-for-all. They are very respectful of the process as well. You're good.
At this time, no. We'll just keep it on point with what Kevin has said.
So so that's the update, if you will, on the creation of this school district. There will be a need to revisit this discussion after these decision points are passed, after these checkpoints, if you will, are passed. And that will, you know, likely be always the next step, what decisions need to be made and how. If, and just for the record, if the board denies this or if it's not successful, it's there certainly are appeal rights for the petitioners to that board. So understand that all of those elements are in the statute.
And based on what you're saying, Kevin, also if we can't come with the DPI, maybe you can't come do a decision for us.
The ball is rolling and it's going, you're going to have to make a decision. It's just a matter of whether you would make that decision. And I would encourage you to take action on this earlier and shoot for that January 15th date. And that's why we're doing the live work now.
Brian, I have a petition. Brian and I have been in contact with commercial appraisers. And I'd like to move forward with getting appraisal of the two buildings so that we can prep for determining assets and liabilities. So I'm just going to make that call in the conversation about, and hopefully get it completed at least prior to April 5th. But at least complete the appraisal prior to the year.
The state statute requires that we get an appraisal of the building for the fore-use value, which is different than the retail value. You know, if we just post the post the building for sale. We've had some difficulty in finding appraisers that do fore-use value, but we did track one down and are going to move forward with having them come in and do an appraisal of the building, essentially. What is the building worth in terms of its usage? So hopefully we'll have that number relatively soon. No.
No?
No. So we've got a estimate under our $10,000 threshold.
Oh, okay.
And we're so.
So Kevin, the link is about QZAB.
Well, I I'm going to make myself more available for questions on this stuff. Because I I don't know that I have a lot more to offer than the update you've heard earlier. As it relates to Act 32 and the energy efficient opportunities to the district, the biggest question that I saw was whether or not the resolution that has already been passed meets the requirements of the resolution as required under Act 32. And my assessment is that it is a not at this point. And if we were looking to engage in a project under that specific act and in compliance with the energy efficiency models of the of that statute, we would need to pass that resolution prior to October 1 of this year. Understanding that these QZAB dollars are available for a while and we don't have to spend them prior to October 1, that that's a bit of a time crunch to make a decision as it relates to Act 32. And that, I mean, that's kind of my reaction to identifying projects. The main reason why we, if the resolution as passed does not meet these requirements under Act 32 is that I don't believe that the projects are specifically identified. We don't have bids out, we don't have contracts awarded or anything like that. And we would need to get all of that in place prior to October 1 in order to meet those deadlines. That doesn't mean we can't do it next year or the year after, but trying to get that done this year would be.
Yeah, if it were possible.
We would have to get.
So just to clarify, to qualify for Act 32, before we, you know, I think the operations committee understands this because we discussed it there. Tim, maybe you can clarify the process a little bit, but essentially the fact that we need to get the performance contractors on board before we even submit the resolution. So we'd have to go to bid with certified performance contractors, get them to come back with the cost of the project, then put forth the resolution, similar to the resolution we put forth with the QZAB, in about 30 days for citizens to submit a petition saying, no, we'd like this to go to referendum, same process as the QZAB. We clear those 30 days, then we can move forward with the with the projects. But our current resolution didn't include bids from performance contractors.
Okay. Any questions on that from anybody?
In short, we're good with QZAB, we're not good with the Act 32 piece.
Right.
Which puts us in a difficult situation because if we were to take the QZAB dollars without Act 32, we have to pay for it out of our general fund, which is, Tim just presented to you as. So we'll get some decisions.
But we can wait on the QZAB, correct, up to five years, correct?
It kind of seemed that from our discussions at the operations committee meeting, we almost were shying away from that, from using QZAB, not not shying away from Act 32, but from using the QZAB funds because of the the cyber learning community bridges that we need to make.
Well, I think that's a good reason for it to go to the committee on instruction, is really looking at the programs provided by the Cyber Learning Academy. And if it's, you know, we've got some software we've already bought for and have licenses for a number of years that we use for our AIMS Academy, we also use it for intervention, we use it for remediation courses. And from my analysis, a lot of what we'd be getting from the Cyber Learning Academy is duplication of those services. Similar products from a different company. I want Cindy to take a little deeper look at it as well. I think once we get rolling here, have a little more time to do so. And we can discuss it from the instructions that we're looking at. Obviously, $625,000 is, it's a lot of software. If we're moving forward with that, then we want to make sure we can use it.
And I think when they, and you'd probably do this, but I think when they look at it, they should see that letter from Lori Lovinsky, the house.
Michelle.
Michelle from PNA?
Well, didn't Attorney Lovinsky from.
She was the open school for us.
Oh, shoot.
You think of Michelle.
Yes, Michelle, about just the pros and cons of it. Because that was kind of what really convinced me where if our interest rates are so low, is this really a benefit? Especially if we don't need what cyber learning academy has.
And Cindy has seen that letter. We'll share with the committee. Yeah, we'll share with the committee as well.
By the time you may have a letter from Corals of Brady as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Kevin, thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks Kevin.
All righty, we will move on to section seven, board action. First up is the medical advisor group. So we have your motion, please.
I move the board to approve the appointment of Dr. Patrick McKenna as the medical advisor to the district and that be understood that the position is under.
All second. Motion for Ms. Mary, second for Ms. Evans. Discussion. No money? Okay, a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Item two, seclusion and restraint report.
You purposely do not have documents in front of you because we have keep student information very confidential on this. And because of where the incidents happened and the number of students there that may be identified one way or another, there could potentially be an opportunity to identify the students. But we're required each year to present to you the number of incidents we've had in which we had to use seclusion or restraint. In every one of those instances, it has to be trained staff members who have been trained in nonviolent crisis intervention who provide the seclusion or restraint to make sure the students are safe. We only use these in situations in which we feel the students at risk of injuring themselves or injuring others. In fact, we've had situations where students have done some damage to property, but we didn't feel they were at risk of themselves. So it's a last resort. Throughout the year, in our schools, we had 25 incidents where we had either seclude or restrain a student. Seclusion would be isolated them in a room with a staff member. Restraint would be putting them in some sort of restraint hold, an approved restraint hold that our staff members have been trained on. We also had six incidents at an alternate school that we need to report as well because the student is ours. So in total, we had 31 incidents. Certainly, if you have any questions about these incidents, you can ask me. But I would ask that you not ask them here at the board meeting and contact me in private. And I'd be happy to share share the information with you, but to protect any student privacy, it should be something we discuss here.
You're looking for a motion and to accept a report.
I am looking for the board to accept the seclusion restraint report as presented for the 2015-2016 school year. All seconded.
Okay, motion from Ms. Youska, second, Ms. Long. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
I should have added, parents are always notified whenever this is done. Within 24 hours, a phone call is made and a formal letter sent out notifying of the seclusion restraint. So it is something that parents are immediately notified of. Thank you. Sorry for missing that.
No problem. I will move on to item three, dissolve child find policy 342.11. We will get a motion, please. I'll move the board to dissolve child find policy 342.11.
So a little background on this, child find is a requirement that we put out a notice on. What we found in reviewing the WASB school board policy book is that it's not a required policy. We found that very few other districts have it. We do and have been putting out our child find policy out there. And essentially, a very brief version of what child find is, is it's our procedures for identifying students with disabilities at, kind of in the preschool ages. So this posted in our annual notices. But the policy is out there and we've kind of found that we're one of the very few districts. In fact, we couldn't find another district that had one. So that may be from, still out there from years past, when they switch from a policy to a notice.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Bobby, we'll call both, please.
Jim Zahn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Oh, sorry.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Candy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
And Mike Bullock?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, construction house material bids.
The construction house material bids kind of were trickling in last second. We finally had a chance to sit down. Josh Krieger, who teaches the construction house class, to sit down with Tanya and kind of go through the bids. So if you open the actual document, it'll show you the bids we received and highlighted our recommendations. I'm going to ask Jake maybe to give us an update on the electrical side of things because it's a little different than in years past, the way we're going to do the electrical within the house. In years past, I think we've had an outside contractor come in and help out with that. I'm going to assume we can go a little different route, which is kind of exciting.
We're lucky to have Rick Grote on our staff, who carries a master electrician license. And I myself carry an electrical license. So between the two of us, we have kind of volunteered to help teach the students a little more one-on-one, specific time to be there, kind of more at a drop-of-the-hat type situation. An electrical contractor would be able to provide on, you know, they're running a business where they're not going to have service guys available to come and help if they run into a tight spot. So Rick and I volunteered to help with that. And then also, instead of purchasing the supplies through an electrical contractor, we're going to purchase them through a company that we could reuse for our maintenance projects anyway. So we'll still obviously do do price points and stuff, but the material should be relatively inexpensive. Whereas in the years past, we were paying for the electrical contractor that was awarded the bid for their time as well. So that's the direction that we're going to try this here and see how that turns out. We should be able to save a fair amount of money on that and hopefully provide the students a little better understanding of the stuff more more readily.
Excellent. Let's say then kind of volunteer you did.
Do we usually use blow home? What's that? Do we usually use blow home for supplies?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep.
Under the plumbing supplies there, um, as part of the bid specification, uh, the contractors are required to provide instruction as well as kind of like a venting design, so that gets handled correctly, and, um, Monarch really isn't capable of supplying that. And the only bid, I believe they only bid the fixtures, and the rest of the material necessary. Looking for a motion at all, or?
Um, let's identify the individuals so I can help out a little bit with what the motion should sound like.
Then we would be looking for a motion to approve the, for the Construction House bids for the materials from Wilhelm Lumber in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and ten cents for plumbing supplies from Heinz and Plumbing and Heating for thirty-five ninety-eight, for windows and doors from Wilhelm Lumber for six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and nineteen cents, and kitchen cabinets, bathroom vanities, and countertop bid also from Wilhelm Lumber in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-three cents. Hanging tape and drywall bids from Vanderquay Brothers and Wassa for forty-eight seventy for a total of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents. I didn't make the motion, I just stated it. Would you like to make that motion?
I, oh, can I?
You can just say it just like I said. You don't even have to say it, just say it, yeah.
No, I, I would like to make a motion of exactly what I'm going to say. I was going to read it all this like I did, and then you...
Uh, so we have motion for Mr. Jensen, second from Ms. Long, to accept the Construction House bids as I stated. Any questions? Hearing none. Uh, let's do roll call, Bobby.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnsonma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
Thank you for donating your time.
It's nice to know that we've got highly qualified house that can step in here and take care of that. Move on to item five, Snowplow Bids. Looking for motion, please.
I move the board to approve the snowplow services with Krueger and Steinfest through the 2018-19 school year.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Lee. Any discussion on bids, um? For reference, the bids, I think it ranged from anywhere from, uh, for next year was from eighty-two dollars an hour, from some of the stuff to ninety-one, just depending upon what was the work being encompassed. Any questions? Bobby, roll call, please.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnsonma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Move on to item six. Community Programs Office, enrichment pubs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So, we have two agreements here that we're looking for a motion on. One is with the Boy, Whitley County Boys and Girls Club. Um, they provide enrichment services for our after-school program at the middle school. Second is for the Family Corner Resource Center, which provides parent outreach services, which are, they're required for our 4K program. Little background again, these are two, two agreements that have come to the board in the past. We did have a note from Mary Jo that in the past she's asked the board if, if they wanted these to continue to come because they're, um, the, the Family Corner Resource one is just something we have to do. Um, the Boys and Girls Club one is part of our, um, after-school program, sorry. You know, she said in the past, the board has said that it's, you know, they, they don't need to see them every year, so I'll leave that up to you guys, but, um, for this year, I definitely wanted to put them on the agenda and, um, have you approve them, and then you can let me know in the future if it's something you want me to bring back each year or not.
Okay, um, you want to handle these separately, or is a complete motion, please?
Do you, do you not watch the family resource centers?
This is not the, the center that's in our school. We, we did have a Family Corner Resource Center that was, um, located in a classroom at the middle school. Um, that agreement, we actually, um, they, they found a different location, which quite frankly, I think was probably best for us as well. You know, it was in our school, we had a, um, a lot of people coming in and out of our school as a result of it. This is for services that they provide through our 4K programs, um, meeting with parents. You know, Cindy Fisher would have to tell you, give you some more information on it, um, but it's specifically services that we provide through 4K.
Well, I was a 4K mom this last year, and there was like a couple times that there were other parents besides me, like one other parent, so like how utilized is it, I guess, to, I mean, but I don't know if it's something you want to let go because it was needed, you know?
Quite frankly, I think it may even be a requirement of our 4K program. I'd have to check with Cindy for sure.
I, you know, I wish there was a way to advertise it more because I think I used a lot of 4K and I, I liked using it, but it'd be nice to get more people involved.
Absolutely.
When I talked about the revenue limit calculation, the student FTE, if we have the outreach program with 4K, I'm not saying it's necessarily effective or ineffective, but the requirement that Brian mentioned is, um, with the outreach services being offered, we get to count them at a point six. If we don't provide the outreach services, we count them at a point five.
So, does it kind of pay for itself then?
More than pay for itself, yeah.
To your point, we certainly can promote it better. Um, obviously with our initiatives, we're working on with promoting our, our district through social media and our district events. That's a very easy way to get word out, and I think that's the way, uh, parents are really interacting with our school these days, so, um, I'll certainly make it a priority to get that information out there.
Thanks.
Okay, then I guess we'd be looking, uh, I think we'd look at why these, anyone want a motion, so like, you know, somebody would like to pull one out there, please?
I make a motion that we, um, accept the agreements with both, uh, Children's Hospital, the Hudson Community Services Family Resource Center, and the Boys and Girls Club, um, for after-school enrichment services for this year of 2016 and 2017.
Okay, a motion from Ms. Lee, second from Mr. Mary. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Uh, Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnsonma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
All righty, item seven, uh, Employee Handbook Revisions. Tina gave those all up to the Operations Committee meeting, and they've been on our board docs, so be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the revisions to the employee handbook and adopt the handbook as revised for the 2016-17 school year.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Gelszow. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, New Hires.
Right before motion is made on this one, um, can we just add to the motion that, um, we want to approve them pending, um, completion of all documentation? Tina's waiting on a few items, um, to come back on a few of these individuals still. So, we just want to make sure we get those back in habit and then we'll get approval.
Okay.
Background checks, those sorts of things.
All right. I'll move the board to move the hiring pending the reception. The reception of incoming information from following individuals for the positions as listed. Carol Egbrinson, Library Clerk, Native Burner, Library Clerk, Ames Administrative Assistant. Robert Schneider, Grade One at Art. Andrea Hipkey, Instructional Interpreter. Karen Aschenbrenner, High School English Teacher. Tammy Malina, General Music at the Middle School. Lori Gitner, Title One Teacher. Tasha Trisha Majeski, I guess. Food Services. Micaline Marine, Special Ed I. As presented. Sorry. Now, uh, it's Robert Schrader. What did I say? Schneider. Wow. Schrader, Schneider.
Mr. Schneider, may he show up when he burns out? Schneider's qualified, we'll take him too.
Uh, any discussion on the hires? Bobby?
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnsonma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
Just as a point of reference, we have a few more hires that we've made today, quite frankly, um, and we're going to go ahead and move forward with them so we can get them in the classroom and ask you to approve them retroactively, our next party. So, you're aware.
Tina, how many more we got to fill? One teacher, right?
Captain Support Position, I don't know who's got it.
Thank you. I can appreciate. I can appreciate what the hard work you've been doing the last few months, so thank you. Uh, number nine, Resignations. Look, in promotion, please. Don't fight over this.
We have to open, it's quite percentage.
Okay, we'll, we'll just take a moment, then we'll show up.
Okay, I move the board to approve the following resignations. Melissa Baldwin? And, uh... Lori Lee? Heather Hepburn? Rochelle Colasa? And Karen Baker?
Second.
There's a few more.
There's a few more.
There's, there's, there's one incident that's a multiple.
Oh, was that the list, Lee Owen?
We grabbed her one of the actual official agendas that I've listed a little...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't even go through them.
It's a little more confusing on board docs than it is on that one, so.
Oh, sweet.
Thank you, Jake.
I move the board to approve the following resignations. Karen Baker, Director of Pupil Services. Rochelle Colasa, Title One Teacher. Heather Hepburn, General Music Teacher. Melissa Baldwin, Special Ed Teacher. David Owen, Special Ed Teacher. Amy Owen, Special Ed Teacher. Lori Lee, Food Services, and Dawnless Food Services. That's it here.
Now do we have a second?
All seconded.
Okay, we have motion from Ms. Gelszow, second from Ms. Long, to approve the resignations. Any discussion? Go ahead, Jess, you've got a question?
No, it's not, it's not, probably.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, hearing none. Bobby, let's do roll call, please.
Scott Johnsonma?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
Item 10, Board Member Resignation. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move that the board accept the resignation of Tony Fuller, board member, except of August 3rd, 2016.
Okay.
All righty, um, yeah, Mr. Fuller has resigned for personal reasons, so we would do that against that. Any other discussion from the board members?
So, what's the next step?
Next step will be a notice will go out tomorrow, assuming you accept his resignation. A notice will go out tomorrow notifying the public that any qualified elector, um, serving within the district can submit a, um, very brief letter of interest and a brief resume indicating their, um, interest in, um, filling the position. That will close on September 7th at our September board meeting. We'll conduct some brief interviews, allowing them to, um, make a, you know, a brief statement as to why they want to be a part of the board. I'll have some questions prepared for you, um, that you can ask them. You can also ask them other questions if you'd like. And the process will essentially be that, um, I, I've reviewed some other, we don't have a defined process in our policies, but, um, look at some of our processes. I think, um, we'll probably go with a ballot, um, issue a ballot. Board members can vote on who they'd like to fill the position. If any one candidate gets a majority, they will receive the position and fill it out for the remainder of the, um, 2016-2017 year. At least that position will be up for election in April. If no candidate gets a majority, we will throw out the low voter and vote again. Until we can get a candidate, if we can't, we will, you know, we've been through the process again, we'll all adjourn and come back and continue the work through the process. Hopefully, we can find a candidate the first time, so.
So, but Brian, if, if there's like several people wanting to interview, you know, maybe my suggestion, we move it to another night, not the board meeting.
Yeah, depending on the numbers we have. Um, and what we'll probably do is, uh, process similar to what we have tonight. We'll have a special meeting before the board, um, meeting, and then follow up with the board meeting.
Sure.
So, we'll keep an eye on the number of applicants we get and report. You know, there have already been some people who have expressed interest, so definitely have a few.
And what if we don't per se accept Tim's resignation?
Kevin, can you help us out? You really don't have a choice.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'll have a vacancy that you'll have to fill. It'll be a different type of vacancy, that's all.
So, that being said, could they, will Mrs. roll call as well? Is there any other discussion first before I go on? Okay, Bobby, let's do roll call.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Tara Gisso?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Johnsonma?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
All righty. And item 11, donations for the month of August. As you can see, three of them for the Phila Backpack Program, and one for PBIS.
I move the board accept the donations. As presented, Unigold Lions Club, five hundred dollars for Phila Backpack. Unigold Auto, two hundred dollars for Phila Backpack. Coganage Credit Union, two hundred dollars for Phila Backpack. And Johnson Electric Coil, two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-five cents for PBIS.
Any motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Long, to accept the donation? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank the parties for their donations and debt of gratitude. Anyone that goes inside the agenda?
Any motion to adjourn?
Second.